Welcome to the Supreme Court of the United Kingdom, where we are at present hearing the appeal in the case of ZED and Hackney London Borough Council. We are at present hearing submissions on behalf of the appellant represented by Mr Ian Wise, Queen's Counsel. And I'll turn now to Mr Wise and invite him to continue his submission.
Thank you, my lord, my lord, my lady. Before we leave issue one, two points, if I may, very quickly. Firstly, the paragraph 32 of our written case, that even if a conforming interpretation of section 193:2B were not possible under the Marleesing principles, interpreted principles, the correct outcome would then be for the court to disapply section 193:2B as far as it authorizes direct discrimination against the appellants. But that, of course, isn't our primary case. Our case is a conforming interpretation that can, of course, be made. Just to clarify one point, say if there be any misunderstanding about this. With respect to our case, it is not that Orthodox Jews are a distinct ethnic subgroup, but the Jewish community generally is an ethnic group, just so everybody's clear as to what we're saying on that. And finally, for the note of the members of the court, we referred to a number of paragraphs from the JFS case. I admitted to refer to paragraph 50 as well, which I invite the court to read in due course. Moving on then, if the court are content, I propose to go to issue three next, because within this issue, we're picking up the EU jurisprudence, which has been the subject of some discussion this morning. Issue three, as the court will see, is whether Agudas' allocation policy constitutes unlawful positive discrimination. This is set out in our case at paragraphs 61 to 86, EF 131 to 140. The crucial question, as we foreshadowed earlier, under this heading, is whether Agudas' allocation policy is permissible positive action or impermissible positive discrimination. ZED's case, put shortly, is that positive action is a permissible derogation from the general principle of non-discrimination found in the Race Directive. Positive action is, according to community law, where a measure seeks to ensure equality of opportunity for a disadvantaged group. This, of course, is in contradistinction to measures which require that a substantive benefit is conferred on members of a disadvantaged group, so as to ensure equality of outcome or results, as we see in some of the cases. And put shortly, what we say is that, given that Agudas' allocation policy provides the substantive benefit of a property for a disadvantaged group, i.e. OJC, rather than giving them the opportunity to compete for properties on an equal footing with others, it is impermissible positive discrimination. This policy is impermissible positive discrimination, as opposed to permissible positive action. Now, we set out in our papers, our case, an example of an application of the distinction between positive action and positive discrimination, that being the Jewish burial case. I'm not going to take the court to it due to shortage of time, but we've got it at EF 2621. And if I can invite the court to read through paragraph 70, 103, 107 and 109, from there you will see where the distinction is drawn between positive action and positive discrimination in the context of what there was found to be an inflexible policy which didn't allow particular circumstances to be taken into account. The court, with regards to the principles to be applied in determining the fine distinction between positive action and positive discrimination, we've referred in our case on a number of occasions to the work of Professor Fredman. The court should have had that received in soft copy towards the end of last week.
We have it as an electronic document.
Apologies for it coming late, my lords. We had difficulty in getting a clean copy. We'd only got marked copies. I'm not going to repeat, excuse me, those passages. You've got the relevant passages in the case. You'll see the wider debate about controversial issues that this conflict between positive action and positive discrimination throws up. With respect to academic work, we've also got in the papers a passage from the work of Professors Craig and De Burgher, starting at 4814 of the papers. I wonder if I can invite the court to pull that up. You'll see at 4815 of the electronic bundle, page 950 of the text, the heading 'Positive Action', and Professors Craig and De Burgher then discuss some of the cases that we're going to come to in due course. And we've derived some of our submissions from their learning. For particular purposes at present, though, if I can take the court to 4820, you'll see there, after a citation from the Abramson case, which, again, we've got in the papers and we'll discuss in a moment, what Craig and De Burgher say is, "There is as yet no case law of a positive action provision in the three more recent pieces of legislation, the Race Directive, the Framework Employment Directive and the Consolidated Gender Equality Directive, although it seems unlikely that the Marshall and Briesch cases would be any differently decided under any of the new positive action provisions. And the existence of a saving clause of some kind will probably remain important for the compatibility with EU law of national positive action measures in the field of access to employment or promotion." And so what's being said there is that in all probability, although the cases are concerned with the Equality Directive, the same principles would almost certainly be applied under what they described the new positive action provisions, including the Race Directive, with respect to which we're particularly concerned. And we would endorse that approach. We haven't looked yet at the Equality Treatment... We did, sorry, we did look at the Equality Treatment Directive earlier. If we can move then to some of the cases. The first case of importance, as you'll see from Fredman and Craig and De Burgher, is the Kalanque case, which we've got at EF 3359. That's a judgment of the Court of 1995. And you'll see in that case, it was concerned with the German legislation, providing that in applications for civil service promotions, women with the same qualifications as men were given priority if the women were underrepresented in the role concerned. A note that although there was exceptions in appropriate cases. We've got the Advocate General's opinion, Advocate General Tesoro. And given the constraints of time, if I can just give you the paragraph references, it's paragraphs eight and nine, where the Advocate General talked about the general principles and the ways in which positive action can be taken. The three models there, we see that referred in the later cases as well. Paragraph 13, 336, 7. And you'll see there, if I can just pick up a sentence there, "To my mind," the Advocate General says, "to my mind, giving equal opportunities could only mean putting people in a position to attain equal results and hence restoring conditions of equality as between members of the two sexes regarding start positions." And then he goes on at paragraph 13. "It seems to me all too obvious that the national legislation at issue in this case is not designed to guarantee greater equality as regards starting positions." And he says that it doesn't fall within the scope of the directive. And then if we can turn over to 19 and 22. If I can invite the court to look at paragraph 22, that's at page 3370. The foregoing observations definitely confirm that Article 2.4 of the Directive only enables existing inequalities affecting women to be eliminated, but certainly not through pure and simple reverse discrimination. That is to say, through measures not in fact designed to remove the obstacles preventing women from pursuing the same results on equal terms, but to confer the results on them directly, or in any event, to grant them priority in taking those results simply because they are women. And so we see here developing the jurisprudence on the permissible limits of positive action. Advocate General Tesoro, of course, was referring to, I think, two earlier cases in the court considered. The court itself, we see the judgment of the court starting at 3374. They recognize at paragraph 9, 337... Sorry, the judgment starts at 3373. Over the page 3374, paragraph 9, the court recognizes the measure under discussion allowed for exceptions in appropriate cases. So it wasn't an absolute rule in the sense that might commonly be understood. And then we see the conclusion of the court at paragraph 22, page 3376. "National rules which guarantee women absolute and unconditional priority for appointments or promotion go beyond promoting equal opportunities and overstep the limits of the exception in Article 2.4 of the Directive." And so absolute rules, in that sense, deemed to be absolute, that were deemed to be absolute and unconditional, go beyond what was permissible as positive action for the purpose of the derogation found in the relevant directive.
It's not very difficult to see why, if the directive is aimed at equality of opportunity, then guaranteeing women priority for appointment goes beyond equality of opportunity.
Yes.
In the present case, the aim of the directive is full equality in practice.
Yes, but once...
It's not equality of opportunity.
Yes, but one still has to delineate the distinction between positive action and positive discrimination.
Why?
Because, as Lord Justice Singh said in the Jewish Burial Society case, there is a distinction between positive action and positive discrimination, positive action being on the permissible side of the line, positive discrimination being on the impermissible side.
Is that a sort of AFRI rule, regardless of whatever the directive says?
Well, can I come to that when one of the other cases that I'm coming to in a moment deals with that point? That's the Briesch case that we relied on in the courts below. But that's a 2004 case. Can I just, taking your Lordship's point on board, if we can move next to the next of the cases, which is the Marshall case, which is a 1997 case, EF 3410. Can I firstly invite the court to consider the opinion of the Advocate General, Advocate General Jacobs in this case, and particularly the principles he sets out at paragraphs 16 through to 29, and at 32 to 35. And he, of course, there is discussing the Kalanque case and the earlier jurisprudence. Now, in this case, in Marshall, this is another case where there were local rules for the promotion of civil servants, providing that where there were fewer women than men in the relevant grade, women were to be given priority in the event of equal suitability, of equal suitability competence and professional performance, unless reasons to a specific individual male candidate tilt the balance in his/her favour. And in those circumstances, you'll see that the court found that to be permissible, permissible positive action. And we get the reasoning for that in the judgment, which starts at 3426, at paragraphs 32 through to 35. And it's the second half of paragraph 35, which we say is particularly important. And you'll see that what the court found, that that measure, the measure that we just discussed, is picking it up against the letter C, is not precluded by Article 2.1 and 4 of the Directive, provided that, and this proviso is important, "In each individual case, the rule provides for male candidates who are equally qualified as the female candidates, a guarantee that the candidatures of the subject of an objective assessment will take account of all criteria specific to the individual candidates and will override the priority according to female candidates, where one or more of those criteria tilts the balance in favour of the male candidate, and such criteria are not such as discriminant to discriminate against the female candidates." And so equality of opportunity, a measure such as that, was permissible with that proviso. But that, of course, is in contradistinction to the earlier case, where it was an absolute measure that didn't provide for that sort of assessment, an opportunity for equally qualified other candidates to be considered and promoted if appropriate. The next case, we then move into the 2000s. The Baydeck case, which is at 3431. This is a judgment of the Court in March 2000. We'll see in particular, if we can, at page 63, EF 3464, where it says that the answer must therefore be that Article 2.1.4 of the Directive does not preclude a national rule which where male and female candidates have equal qualifications guarantees, guarantees that qualified women who satisfy all the conditions required or laid down are called to interview in sectors in which they are underrepresented. So that's a classic case of opportunity. And so one sees very clearly that that's positive action as opposed to positive discrimination. The next case is an important one. Again, a 2000 case, it's the case of Abramson. This is a Swedish case concerning academic appointments. We've got that starting at 3182. And we see from the headnote that the background to this case, "A vacancy notice for a professional fessorial post at a Swedish university indicated that an appointment might be made on the basis of a Swedish law whereby a candidate for a higher educational post who belongs to an underrepresented sex and possesses sufficient qualifications was to be given preference over a candidate of the opposite sex unless the difference between the candidates was so great that the positive discrimination would give rise to a breach of the requirement of objectivity in making of appointments." The point that we draw particular attention to can be found in the court's judgment, which in the paragraphs from 60 to 62, which are at EF 3204. On purposes, if we can just pick up paragraph 62, you'll see that the directive doesn't preclude a national case law under which a candidate belonging to an underrepresented sex may be guaranteed preference over a competitor of the opposite sex, provided that the candidates possess equivalent and substantially equivalent merits, where the candidatures are subjected to an objective assessment which takes account of the specific personal situation of all candidates. So what that means in effect is that it can be a tie-break. Although they don't use that phrase, that's the effect of paragraph 62 of Abramson, the general proposition that a tie-break may be permissible. We then turn to the Lommer's case that we saw reference to this morning. That starts at EF 3377. This is a 2004 judgment of the Court. Sorry, a 2002 judgment reported in 2004, my mistake. This was concerning a Dutch measure, whereby the Dutch Ministry of Agriculture restricts places to its nursery to children of female employees, subject to a proviso that children of male employees may be given places in emergency situations. I can take the court to firstly, in the judgment, to paragraph 38, which is at EF 3407. And this is important. So can I invite the court to read paragraphs 38 and 39, please? And so we see that what the court's doing there, it takes it in two stages. It looks at the measure, which it finds to fall within the principle of equality of opportunity, i.e. positive action, but then goes on to see whether the measure itself is proportionate. There's two stages to the process. And if we can go over the page 3408, paragraph 47. "In this respect, a measure which would exclude male officials who take care of their children by themselves from access to a nursery scheme subsidised by their employer would go beyond the permissible derogation provided by the Directive by interfering excessively with the individual right to equal treatment, which that provision guarantees." And then to the conclusion of the court at paragraph 50, at 3409, which I invite the court to read rather than read it actually, it sets out the two-stage process there, and emphasizing the last four lines.
I don't think there's really any analogy between the provision of nursery places as a means of ensuring equality of opportunity for female workers and the provision of housing, where the problem that the Orthodox Jews are facing is an inability to access housing on the ordinary market. And the problem with the problem wasn't that women were disadvantaged in access to nurseries, that the nurseries were being provided as a means of enabling them to get work.
Yes. And that's a classic exposition of positive action as opposed to positive discrimination.
Yes, but the problem in our case is it's not an equality of opportunity issue at all. The problem isn't that Orthodox Jewish people have some sort of inherent characteristics that can be compensated for in some way, that will make it easier for them to access housing on the private market. The problem is that, for a variety of reasons, they are discriminated against in the private market, and that's why that market is being supplemented by the provision of housing by a charitable housing association.
Yes, but it's not inherited characteristics that we're concerned with in the present case.
No, it doesn't have to be. Article 5 requires or legitimises the pursuit of full equality in practice, where people suffer from what it calls, it's not inherited characteristics, it's disadvantages linked to racial or ethnic origins.
Yes. And that demonstrates itself in a number of different ways, as we see from the evidence. But the question, as a matter of principle, that the courts are addressing in these cases that I'm referring to, is what is permissible positive action as a derogation from the general principle of equality and non-discrimination? And one has to put it in that context. And now, we say that there is a commonality between the way in which the derogations are expressed amongst the various directives. And you'll see in the Briesch case, which I think we're coming to next, in fact, yes, we're coming to next, where another, I think this is the... This is the... Sorry, just one moment. This is, yeah, a different context. But this is where, and the principle is expanded in that context as well. So it's the general principles that are applied. And as Professor Craig and Professor Burgers say in their text, it's very difficult to see, we would say it's impossible to see why any different principle should be applied to the Race Directive than has been applied to the Equality Directive.
Well, one reason might be that the earlier directives spoke of a goal as being equality of opportunity, whereas this one speaks of a goal as being equality in practice.
Yes. Can I turn then to the next case? Oh, well, let me just finish Lommer's first. And I'm going to try and answer your question by reference to the next case I'm coming to in one moment. Your Lordship makes a valid point, but can we just go back to Lommer's, just to finish?
If you like, Mr Wise, you could sort of think about it in this way. How on earth would you go about ensuring equality of opportunity for Orthodox Jewish people, other than by some sort of scheme of the kind that we're dealing with?
Well, we've suggested a number of things. It's not, of course, for us to rewrite Agudas' policy. But your Lordship, the court saw a few moments ago, for example, in the Abramson case, where there's an objective assessment, an equally needy person can... A tie-break can be the answer to a particular decision, to a particular post.
But your client doesn't deal with Agudas at all. They deal with Hackney. Hackney has... Hackney has, and Hackney has access to a housing, well, access to a housing stock of which Agadas's contribution forms a tiny proportion.
Yes, absolutely, but a very important proportion as far as my client is concerned, because in the area that, what the evidence shows was that in the area that she lived in, the Stamford Hill area, at the time, at the relevant time, 100% of the four-bedroom properties that were allocated were within the Agadas stock. So she was excluded from all the relevant, all the available tenancies.
She is not tied to a particular area, the way in which the Orthodox Jewish community are tied to that area, for the reasons that are explained in the evidence about the need for proximity to semagogues and Jewish schools and so forth.
She was tied to the area for other reasons, my Lord. Now, it's not for us, we're not saying at this stage that that necessarily means that her ties are stronger than the Orthodox Jews who were applying for these properties, but the evidence is unequivocal that she lived in that area, her mother lived in that area, a child went to school in that area, she went to school at the same, to the same school. She has very deep roots in that area, which demand respect. And so, and at the same time as the 100% of the four-bedroom properties in the Stamford Hill area being allocated by Agadas at the relevant period, 50% of the four-bedroom properties in the whole of Hackney in the relevant period were allocated by Agadas. And so, your Lordship, I like on the word miniscule, that depends on the perspective one's looking at it from. From my client's perspective, it wasn't miniscule at all, these were the only properties that were suitable for her circumstances. And that's taking into account, of course, the very serious conditions that she was in in the first place, bearing in mind the risk of serious injury or even fatality to her disabled child. And so all these factors, in order for proportionate and fair decisions to be made, should be taken into account. Now, there may well be Orthodox Jews who have equally compelling reasons, but that's by the by, as far as we're, as far as present purposes is concerned, because we don't even get to the starting point, we have no opportunity to bid for any of these properties. And so, returning to my Lord's question of a few moments ago, what are Agadas or similar organisations to do in circumstances such as this? There's two points in response to that, if I may, my Lord. Firstly, they can provide support for the OGAC in meeting the particular accommodation needs that they've got, and of course they do do, and that's a classic example of positive action designed to create equality of opportunity. The other thing that can be done is act in the way that the other faith-based organisations do, including the Industrial Workers' Society, which is a Jewish-based housing association based in East London with a heritage going back to around the time of the First World War, if I remember correctly. And the other two faith-based housing associations that we refer to, the Bangla and the York Housing Associations, all three of which, although they predominantly provide support and accommodation for members of the community, which they are specifically there to support, provide support and accommodation for the wider community. Now, when one looks at the figures, one sees that that is disproportionately in favour of, for the Bangla Housing Association, for example, Bangladeshi Muslim tenants, but they aren't exclusive. And that's the distinction between Agadas's policy and the other faith-based housing associations' policies. It's the exclusivity that marks it out as being impermissible, my Lord. There's a range of measures that could be taken. And in response to my Lord's question, my point about it being miniscule, and picking it up on the facts from the perspective, those facts from the perspective of my client, as we've just set out, it makes no difference to her whether it's a small number or a large number, she only wanted one property, of course. And equality isn't limited to, by scale, makes no difference if it's one discriminatory act or a more generic discriminatory act. And so one sees, for example, and we refer to this in the case, the Paul and Hall case, you think of that example about discrimination against homosexuals in the allocation of bedrooms in hotels, there was no answer in that case to say, well, there's 99 other hotels on the south coast that they could have gone to, the fact that there's one hotel that prohibits homosexuals being allocated is neither here nor there. It was, and that was held to be unlawful. And so for similar reasons, we say that the dominus rule doesn't have any traction in the present case, and this is unlawful discrimination. Sorry, I took some time with that, my Lord, and I've probably picked up a few points that we're going to come to in due course in any event. But of course, those points are, the points that your Lordship raises are absolutely central to this case, and we do say that despite them being important points, that we, that there are complete answers to them, which are in my client's favour. And one always has to put this in the context of the presumption of non-discrimination. That's the context, and that's why we made that point as a preliminary point in our submissions this morning. These positive action provisions are a derogation from that general principle. So if we can just go back to, just finish the Lammers case before we come to Briesh, you'll see then that the proviso in Lammers that we've got in the last four sentences of paragraph 50, at EF3409, is only insofar as the said exception in favour of male officials is construed as allowing those of them who take care of their children by themselves to have access to that nursery place scheme, to the nursery place scheme on the same conditions as female officials. And so proportionality, of course, that proportionality exercise, that's particular to the facts of that case, as proportionality exercises will be generally. And so the question arises then is to the proportionality of the measures in this case. But we say that what the case law shows us as a matter of principle is that unconditional and blanket policies such as discriminatory policies that Agadas has don't even get into that territory, because they are impermissible, unlawful positive discrimination measures rather than equality of opportunity. Now, Advocate General Jacobs in the Martin Schalz case said that a blanket policy would be necessarily unlawful, and one doesn't even get to proportionality. The more modern case law, however, suggests that we do get to proportionality, but that and absolute policy such as this must necessarily be disproportionate, is the approach that the Court's taken. But with those comments, can we turn now to the Briesh case? This is a 2004 case, EF3206. This is a French case, and you'll see from the head notes that there was a French law, under French law, the age limit for obtaining access to certain persons in the public sector was fixed at 45 years, and exemption from that age limit was however provided for widows who had not remarried, but for widowers, but not for widowers, I apologise, in the same situation. And the question was whether that was contrary to the positive action derogation in the Equal Treatment Directive. And so if we turn to the judgment, the way the Court dealt with it, that starts at EF3219. Now, what that suggests very strongly is that an automatic and unconditional measure would necessarily be disproportionate. And you'll see that the language there, the appropriate and necessary language, is the language that we looked at in the Kresko case this morning. Now, if we look at the way the judgment concluded in this case, 27 through to 32, before we come to that, you'll see that in play in this case also was Article 141 of the treaty, which we have at paragraph 3 of the judgment, EF3219. That's now been replaced in identical terms, I think it's Article 157 of the current treaty. So the equal treatment provision in the treaty is also picked up in the judgment of the Court, which we see at paragraph 29 and on. So we see that there's a breach of that and, 32 is polished from the foregoing, that the answer to the question referred must be that Article 3, 1 and 2, 4 of the directive must be interpreted as meaning that they preclude a national provision, such as that in question in the main proceedings, which preserves the exemption from the age limit for obtaining access to the public sector employment, etc. And so there we see another example of the way in which the jurisprudence has developed, quite unequivocal, we would suggest. The next case that we refer to is rather more recent, this is 2019, this is the Kresko case that we looked at this morning, that's behind, that's at page 3278. This was, of course, concerning the directive prohibiting discrimination on grounds of religion or belief. And you'll see in this case that exactly the same principles are applied. The Court's been taken to paragraph 65 already, and you'll see the conclusion at paragraph 68 and 69, where the Court found that the measuring issue go beyond what is necessary to compensate for the alleged disadvantage. Very final case is an after case where similar principles were applied, that's behind, that's at page EF4779. The EEA treaty, as we'll be aware, incorporated EU law so far as these directives are concerned. This again was an academic post case, this is, as you see, a Norwegian case, quite similar to the Swedish case in background, but it's paragraph 45 of the judgment, at EF4791, that we draw attention to. Picking it up halfway through, you see that what the after court says, the directive is based on the recognition of the right of equal treatment as a fundamental right of the individual. National rules and practices delegated from that right can only be permissible when they show sufficient flexibility to allow a balance between the need for the promotion of the underrepresented gender and the opportunities for candidates of the opposite gender to have their situation objectively justified. There must, as a matter of principle, be a possibility that the best qualified candidate obtains the post. So that's in the context of the right of equal treatment as being a fundamental principle. So the best person must have the, best person for the post must have the opportunity to get the advantage. And again, that's another example of how the Courts have delineated the appropriate parameters of positive action rather than impermissible positive discrimination. And so those then are the principles that are relevant, we say, in determining this issue. If we can return then to our written case, at paragraph 75. I'm sorry, 73, we'll pick up the principles as Professor Fredman derived from that run of cases. You see at 73A and B, at EF136, that the first principle derived is that preference policies should not be automatic and unconditional. Meritorious individuals from outside the beneficiary class should have the possibility of individual assessment. And then, secondly, the emphasis on individual merits has meant that preference measures can only be legitimate in the narrowly circumscribed situation in which all the candidates are equally qualified. That is, the preference policy can only operate as a tiebreak, and that was the, of course, the Abramson case that we took the Court to. So those then are the general principles that we derive from the case law. So we then go on to consider whether, in those circumstances, that Agadas's policy permits the permissible, exceeds the permissible scope of positive action under EU law. This is picking it up, our case up at paragraph 77, and we set out there five reasons why the policy goes beyond the scope of permissible positive action. I'll take them shortly because of time pressures. Firstly, you'll see that the policy affords automatic and unconditional preference. Secondly, that it doesn't permit an objective assessment. Thirdly, it doesn't use membership of the OGAC as a tiebreak. Fourthly, there's no saving provision such as an exceptionality provision or safety valve. This is paragraph 78 through to 82, incidentally, of the written case. And fifthly, Agadas's policy is an example of a measure that substitutes for equality of opportunity, the result which can only be arrived at by providing such equality of opportunity. That was the way that it was put in the Kalanki case, which as we've seen is impermissible in EU law. And so for all those reasons, we say that Agadas's policy goes beyond the line. line, falls on the side of positive discrimination as opposed to positive action. Bear with me one moment, my lords. One other point that's made against us is the reference to the EHRC code, which is said takes a different view of the scope of positive action. We say that that's neither here nor there because public bodies aren't bound by the code and the code override EU law. With respect to the false analogy point made by Hackney, what Hackney say is that we're drawing a false analogy between recruitment and promotion decisions in an employment context and social housing allocation, that's in Hackney's written case at paragraph forty. But that fails to recognise the fact that here we are concerned with discrimination. And this issue is concerned with whether Agudas' policy is unlawful positive discrimination. It's not a false analogy between the positive action provisions, there's no false analogy between the positive action provisions of the Equal Treatment Directive and the Race Directive, which we say should be interpreted in harmony. And so for all those reasons, we say that consistently with settled EU law, the Agudas' policy is not permissible positive action, but falls within that deemed to be impermissible positive discrimination with the directive. Can I then turn to the second, so that deals with the EU issues, my lords and my lady. You'll see that the second issue that we raise in this case concerns the obligation under the HRA and the interpretive obligation there. And what we say about that is that the Court of Appeal was wrong to find that section one nine three two B is not subject to a proportionality requirement under the Human Rights Act. The appellant's case is at paragraphs, on this point is at paragraphs thirty eight to sixty of their case. EF hundred and twenty to hundred and thirty one. Save there be any confusion about it, we aren't seeking a declaration of incompatibility. We mentioned it in passing that it may be necessary, but we say that it isn't necessary because in our submission, the law is clear on this. And also for clarification, Agudas' point about the relationship between sections three and six of the Human Rights Act, we say is an arid point. It's plain that section six requires public authorities to act in a convention compliant way, and it's necessary to read section one nine three two B in a convention compatible way as required by section three. The key issues to ensuring, to answer as to whether there should be a proportionality requirement incorporated into the relevant subsection, or whether Agudas is, in allocating its properties, is exercising a public function for the purpose of section six three of the Human Rights Act. And secondly, whether their allocation of social housing falls within, Lord's ears.
Yes, I was a little bit confused by the exercising a public function point because, as I understand the case and the issues identified in the statement of facts and issues, it's about whether a proportionality requirement can be read into section one nine three two B, relying on section three of the Human Rights Act, which is the interpretive provision. And you don't, if you are successful on that, you don't need to get into the question whether the second respondent is a public function, exercising a public function. And if they were exercising a public function, you wouldn't need section three, would you? Because you'd just go against the charity based on their duty, which would then apply under section six of the Human Rights Act. So I was unsure why we needed to get into this issue.
Well, fortunately, we don't need to get into it anyway, my lord, because it's a point not taken by Agudas in any event, as you'll see from their case.
I think they just say that they don't concede it, but they don't want to take up time arguing about it.
Yes, yes. So there's no
But why does it matter? If you can't win under section three, you haven't relied at any stage, so far as I can see, on a distinct duty under section six of the Human Rights Act.
No, that's entirely correct, my lord. No, but we still have to fall within the ambit of Article eight, in any event, of course.
Oh, yes, no, that's I fully accept. I was just questioning why it was relevant on this appeal to examine the public function issue.
Well, as it happens, we're not going to in any event because there's no contest on it, my lord. So come to the ambit of Article eight where there is a contest. Now, the jurisprudence on ambit for the purposes of Article fourteen are, of course, will of course be well known to the court. We foreshadowed some of the main case law in our case, very briefly, paragraphs forty two and forty three. But what we say, in short, is that the allocation of, Agudas' allocation of housing plainly falls within the ambit of the Article eight right to respect for private and family life. And we say it is obviously linked to respect for Z's private and family life. We set out that at paragraphs, paragraph forty four A, B and C. We rely on three points there. Firstly, that my client was entitled to seek an allocation of housing from Hackney, which points towards being in the, within the ambit of Article eight, entitled to seek an allocation of housing that would provide safe and stable accommodation. But we also rely in this regard on what Lord Wilson said in the DA case, the court will have that in the case, where Lord Wilson said in that case that it cannot seriously be disputed that the values underpinning the right of all the appellant's to respect their family life includes those of a home life underpinned by a degree of stability, practical as well as emotional. Now, that case, of course, was one of the benefit cap cases, and so the context was not directly on point. But the way in which Lord Wilson puts it, as we've just said, it's paragraph thirty five, sorry, I should have given you the references, it's EF three eight six six five. The way in which Lord Wilson puts it is plainly of more general application. And it's of note that these comments were specifically endorsed by Lord Carnworth, with whom my lord, Lord Reed and Lord Hughes agreed, and we see that at paragraph one hundred and two, EF two eight eight three, also agreed by Lady Hale at paragraph one hundred and thirty seven, EF three eight nine three. And again, specifically agreed with my lord, Lord Kerr, at paragraph one hundred and fifty eight, EF, which we've got at EF three eight nine nine. So as a general principle, it had widespread support amongst the court. We say applying that principle and that approach plainly puts us within the ambit of Article eight. And then in any event, as we go on to say at paragraph forty four C, the significant impairment of the families, this family's mutual enjoyment of each other's company and the anxiety and depression exacerbated by the housing situation are factors that also bring this housing allocation scheme, so far as we're concerned, my clients are concerned, within the ambit of Article eight on the family life basis. And one only has to consider for a moment the circumstances of the family at the relevant time as to why that is the case. We say it's a clear case of falling within the ambit of Article eight. Now, the case, the approach of the Court of Appeal, we say, to this issue was misconceived in a number of respects. We pick that up at paragraph forty five of the case, EF one two four. Firstly, we have at paragraph forty six. The, directly contrary to the approach to Article four, which we foreshadowed earlier, is that the starting point of the Court of Appeal's analysis was that Article eight doesn't entitle a right to be provided with a, to be provided with a home. Well, of course, that's not our case and never, and never has been. Plainly, Article eight doesn't confer such an entitlement. And so the point, we say, is irrelevant to the issue in the present case. The critical point is that having decided to supply social housing in the provision and allocation of these homes, Agudas is under a duty to do so in a non discriminatory manner. The second
I'm sorry, can I just interrupt for a moment? Could you, would you be able to explain just in a few sentences, Mr Wise, what exactly the relationship is between, or maybe not what exactly, but in broad terms anyway, what relationship is between Agudas and Hackney? Obviously, Hackney are subject to statutory responsibilities. Agudas, I'm not sure how they get, how they get involved with Hackney, what the status of their relationship, what their relationship is.
They have an agreement, my lord, which we have in the papers, I don't have it immediately to hand, I'm sure we can find it in due course. There's an agreement that was arrived at, I think it was in nineteen ninety three or there about, I'm sure I'll be corrected by one of my learning friends, in which a significant proportion of Agudas' properties are to be allocated by Hackney. And also, there is an agreement that Agudas' properties will be advertised through Hackney's allocation system. And so when a person is eligible, a person such as my client bids for properties, and these days homeless people or people who are applying for social housing bid online for properties, they go into the relevant portal, which in this case, I stand corrected, but I think was the East London Letton Company portal, and Hackney's, and Agudas', sorry, his properties are advertised on that portal. And we've got examples in the papers, like the exhibited to miscarriers statement, of the adverts that an applicant for social housing in that area would see. I can see my learning friend, Mr Gudinski, picking that up, if somebody could just find me that page. And what happened, sorry, Mr Gudinski's just put his hand up, do you have the relevant page?
If you're looking for Hackney's Housing Association nominations agreement with Agudas' struggle, it is at EF one three four five.
Thank you, I'm obliged. One three four five. Yes, that's right. Nineteen ninety two, I think I said nineteen ninety three, but nothing hangs on that. So that's the basis of the agreement, that's obviously not controversial. And my lord was concerned about what happened in these circumstances. We'll be in one second. Now, do we have, what is EF seven seven, it's EF seven seven four, we have an example of what an applicant would see if they went into the allocations portal. So does your lordship have that, seven seven four? So here we have, so what happens, these properties are advertised and people can bid for them. And of course, Hackney's scheme itself has a prioritisation according to need, and those with the greatest need are the ones that are most likely to get the properties. And so this property comes up, this is a four bedroom flat in Stamford Hill that we see here, rent and so on. And the further, the crucial point is the further information towards the bottom of the page, in capitals, considerate only to the orthodox Jewish community landlords will permit overcrowding by one bedroom. So there's no point in my clients or anybody who isn't a member of the Orthodox Jewish community even bidding for that property, or, and that's the way that Agudas generally advertise the properties, I don't think there's any dispute about that, this is the one off. And so your lordship and your ladyship will see how the process works. Sorry, my lord, does that, my lord, Lord Reed?
That's helpful, thank you. So far as I can see, the agreement we were taken to is an agreement between the council and an association of housing associations, and under it, they agree to notify the council of vacancies in their properties. And the council can then submit a nominee for the vacancy, and the housing association will then, can then decide whether or not to accept the council's nominee, and if it accepts it, it then makes an offer to the nominee of accommodation.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
It is helpful, my lord, it's dealt with the paragraph six of the SFI.
Yep.
EF ninety six.
Yep, thank you.
My understanding, my lord, is this is a generic agreement of the kind that Hackney's entered into with a number of housing associations. Or this is just the one that's applicable in these circumstances, this housing association.
Yes, so the, so the person who's wanting housing has no direct dealings with the housing association unless it is, unless that person is nominated by Hackney.
No, no, because a proportion of the properties will be, Hackney will nominate a proportion of the properties, but the other proportion of the properties will go on to the, on to the website.
Yes, yes, of course. And so in the present case, for example, the appellant won't have had anything to do with Agudas.
That's correct, but she could have made an application through the the website if she'd have met the criteria. Yeah, okay. We were still on, we were on Article eight, my lord, if I can return to that, we were in the written case at EF one two five, we were turning to, we just dealt with paragraph forty six, which was the parameters of We were turning to, we just dealt with paragraph forty six, which was the parameters of, 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 of Article eight, not providing a, a home itself, with respect for a home that's the key. Um, we then turned to consider the Ealing case, which is, um, obviously material in, in, in this case, relied on by the courts below and, and, uh, supported by my learning friends and, and, uh, on, on this appeal. Uh, we say, you, the courts will see what we, we, we say about that. We say that there's very little assistance, in fact, in, in, in the Ealing case. If one looks at, at what, um, the Court of Appeal in that case was actually concerned with, they were concerned with the mutiny of, of, of Ealing scheme. And, um, due to the pressures of time, if I, if I, for the court's note, if I can refer you to the master of the Rolls' judgment of paragraphs one hundred and one and one hundred and two, you will see there how he dealt with the two different aspects of the scheme that were under consideration before that court in that case. Firstly, the, um, uh, model tenant priority, uh, scheme that the MTPS, which he deals with in paragraph one hundred and one, that's at two eight, one, three for, for the court, court note. And that, he said, had nothing to do with the core value of, of Article eight. But then went on, when dealing with the working household priority scheme, and this was a, a, a scheme within Ealing scheme, uh, that gave additional priority to households that were in work. Uh, he found that that did fall within the ambit of Article, uh, Article eight, uh, on the basis that single parents with children, who were the cohort, uh, the relevant cohort in the, in, in that case, were not already in secure accommodation or indeed not accommodated by Ealing, uh, at, at all. Well, we say that, 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 that may well have been a relevant consideration in the circumstances of, of the Ealing allocation policy. Uh, but that's not a, a, a principle of general application to be applied when determining whether the, the, that a particular policy falls or decisions fall within the ambit of, 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 of Article eight. And frankly, doesn't provide a, a great deal of assistance to, uh, the, the, the current case. What we, uh, what, what we were praying aid of is, 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 is general principles and the way in which the courts have traditionally approached, uh, Article eight for the purposes of, uh, Article fourteen. And the court would be very familiar with the language that's used in, 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 in the cases, um, often used, uh, it, it would appear more of, um, convenience rather than, um, uh, rather than interrogation. But we see words such as modalities, more than tenuous, ambit and so on, used continually. Uh, but when stepping back from it, what, what, what are we concerned with here? We're concerned with whether, uh, whether, um, the alleged discrimination in a particular case has got something to do with those rights. And so does the allocation, the discrimination in the allocation of properties by Agudas have something to do with our client's home and, and, and family life? And when one puts it like that, the answer, the answer we, 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 we suggested is, is, is obvious, especially when, when one considers the more discreet way in which this court, um, looked at it in the, in, in the DA case. It can't seriously be disputed that the values underpinning the right of all the parents, all the parents, with respect for family life includes that of a home underpinned by a degree of stability practical, as well as emotional. And that plainly falls within the, brings the allocation of properties in, in the present case, uh, within the, the parameters, ambit or, or modalities, whoever one wants to describe it, uh, of, 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 of Article eight. And that's particularly so for, for, for my client. And, and one always have to remember that convention rights are individual rights, rights of the individual rather than of society generally. One considers the circumstances at the relevant time of my client and, and, and her family and her need for safe and secure accommodation. Then we, we, we say it's unquestionably a case that falls within the parameters of, 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 of Article eight. In paragraph forty eight, we see that, um, we set out four reasons why we say that the Court of Appeal erred in, 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 in this, in respect to this particular issue. They've largely been foreshadowed, uh, in, in, in any event. But if you can invite the court to read those in, in, in due course, in particularly D, where we say that there was, uh, an undue focus on home, uh, rather than, uh, rather than the private and, and, and family life limbs of, of, of Article eight. And so for those reasons, uh, we, we would say that the HRA does indeed require a proportionality assessment to be read into section one hundred and ninety three, uh, two B. Um, the precise words, uh, um, uh, 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 aren't for us to determine, um, as for the reason set out by Lord Roger in the, in, in the guiding case. But, but to incorporate proportionality into this provision wouldn't, uh, wouldn't be a difficult dressman's exercise in, in any event. So there's no practical impediment to, um, reading in proportionality into the, um, into this provision. It's not, um, it, it, we're, we're more concerned, I think as Lord Roger said, with the, with the substance rather than the form of, 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 of the right. And for those reasons, we say that, um, uh, proportionality should be read in not only for, uh, not, not only in, in compliance with the EU law, but also in compliance with the HRA. That then brings me to the, the, the final issue that the, the claimants raise, this is issue four, which the court will find, the court will find set out in our written case at paragraphs eighty seven to a hundred, uh, EF one hundred and forty to a hundred and forty seven. And the key issue here is whether Agudas, Agudas' policy in allocate, only allocating properties to members of the OCJ strikes a fair balance between the rights of the individual and the interests of the, uh, community. The fair balance to be, uh, conducted in this case between the rights of individuals such as Zed and the rights of the OJC. And more particularly, whether the Court of Appeal was correct in finding that the divisional court approached that, uh, question, um, correctly. Now, Agudas say it's difficult to see what this issue adds to issue three. Um, but we say that, and plainly, if, if, if we succeed on issue three, we don't move on to issue, issue four. In that, on issue three, as the court will recall, we said that if there's a, a, a blanket policy of the kind, um, that can be characterized as, as unlawful positive, uh, discrimination, that it will, it will necessarily be disproportionate and unlawful. However, if we fail on, fail to convince the court on, on that issue, then issue four nevertheless still comes into play because different considerations may arise if the policy is analyzed in terms of balance rather than positive action. Plainly, there may be some overlap, but, but, but the analysis, the approach of the courts is quite distinctly, uh, different. Before we come to the specific i- issues, there is the, uh, now well trodden argument as to the approach and the test to be applied by, uh, the courts at the full stage of the proportionality exercise, the fair balance exercise. And, uh, we are all, and the courts particularly, are, are aware of the debates to the relevance and, and, and application of the manifestly without reasonable foundation test. Um, that test, uh, as, as we see from the judgment of this court in, in, in Gillum, is perhaps rather more nuanced, um, than, than hitherto being understood. We don't fall in this case in the welfare benefits type case. Uh, and, and, and so we say we aren't called by that. But in any event, even if we are, we, we remind the court of what the, 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 what the court said in, in the DA case, particularly what Lord Wilson said at paragraph sixty six, for the court's note EF three, eight, seven, three, um, as, as, uh, what manifestly without reasonable foundation means, the approach of the court and, and so forth. Um, the burden is of course on the, uh, uh, on the, on the public body to justify the difference in, 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 in treatment. And the court will see whether it's, um, manifestly unreasonable. But what Lord Wilson said there, it's fanciful to contemplate that the court would conclude that if they found that the justification, uh, was, um, reasonable, that it would go on to consider whether it was manifestly unreasonable. In other words, the word manifestly, uh, doesn't add anything to, uh, any, anything to the test. So one, what, what, one has to bear in mind, uh, the, the, the threshold, uh, these things are, these cases such as this are, are of course all, all context dependent. And you've seen the particular context that, uh, that, that, that we are in and the seriousness of, of the decision for our, our individual client. We set out in our, uh, speak, uh, our written case, from paragraphs ninety two through to ninety eight, the four reasons why we say the court below went wrong. The first reason, uh, as, as we see at ninety two, refers to the point my lord, lord Wilson, uh, no, lord Reed, sorry, said, made earlier about the, the, the disadvantages being miniscule. I perhaps already, uh, made my submissions on that in response to my lord's question earlier. Uh, but the court will see, uh, set out in perhaps more detail and with the relevant references, uh, at sub paragraphs A, B and C, uh, that the disadvantage to my client was not miniscule. And in, in any event, uh, that's an impermissible approach to, um, not the correct approach to, um, a fair balance in, 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 in these circumstances. Secondly, at, at paragraph ninety three, the court will see that we say that the Court of Appeal relied, um, reliance on the, excuse me one moment, um, the, the court, the divisional court and the Court of Appeal failed to properly interrogate the extent to, to which Agudas' policy was capable of meeting the many and, and many uncompelling needs of the Orthodox Jewish, the OJ, the OJC. And of course, we accept, readily accept that the OJC do have many uncompelling needs, but so do many others. And we set out some of the evidence about that. There's, there's copious evidence in the case on that. Um, and, uh, and, and how other communities in, 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 in the area are also severely disadvantaged. And particularly, you'll see reference at, at, uh, sub paragraph ninety three B, to the evidence of Rabbi Danny Rich on, on, on the relevant cases. And I invite the court to read that witness statement, uh, in, 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 in full. And in, and in terms of the many compelling reasons, we deal with, at sea with the particular adaptations to the properties that are prayed in aid of by, by Agudas, uh, as being a, a compelling reason for, um, properties to be allocated to the, uh, uh, OJC. Uh, we would say that that should have minimal or, or very little weight in the, in, in fair balance exercise. Thirdly, we say that even if, uh, the, the courts below did, uh, they did properly interrogate the extent to which Agudas' policy was capable, capable of meeting the many and compelling needs of the OJC, they failed to meaning, meaningfully weigh the extent of those needs with the many, many compelling needs of other groups seeking social housing in, 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 in Hackney. Although in, in, in many, in, in a sense, the second or third point there, um, uh, uh, overlapped and, and, and relied. And fourthly, with, this is the point that, uh, we picked this up at paragraph ninety seven of our case. The Court of Appeal was wrong to have accepted the divisional, um, court's conclusion that the allocation of properties to non-members of the OCJ, OJC, sorry, uh, would fundamentally undermine, uh, Agudas' charitable objectives, such that there was no more limited way of achieving that legitimate aim. Now, that's a point I think foreshadowed in the question that my lord, lord Reed put to me, uh, earlier this afternoon. Uh, and as hopefully we've, um, made clear, uh, the allocation of properties to non-members of the OCJ would not fundamentally undermine Agudas' charitable objectives. Other similar charities do allocate their properties in a non-exclusive way in this, in this, um, in the, in the sense that, uh, we, we, we say they should. Uh, and that of course hasn't limited the, uh, limited their achievement of, of their legitimate aim. It may be, uh, as, as Hackney say in their written case, that it would be less effective. Um, but one is considered, what, one is concerned here of course, uh, with the fair balance exercise and could, and the question particularly on this point as to whether Agudas could have, um, modified their policy or adopted a, a policy that wasn't for the exclusive, um, allocation of properties to the, uh, OJC, but would still have, have met the legitimate aims of, 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 of the charity. And, and of course, we say, uh, there's, there's, there's only one and, and to, to do that. Um, it's a fact that it's the, it's the traditional fair balance exercise that, that the courts are, are, are familiar with. We say that at paragraph ninety nine of the written case, the, 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 the reasoning of the, the courts below was, was such that this is a case where this court should form its own, uh, proportionality exercise and, and decide for itself where, whether a fair balance has been struck. And we'd invite.
Mr Wise, you, you are trespassing on the time of the other councils, so.
I was on my.
You draw your submissions to a conclusion fairly soon.
I was on my very last sentence, my lord. I was just saying that it's an exercise for the court, um, for the reason set out in paragraph ninety nine, the, the, the courts below, um, heard in the way that they approached this issue. And therefore it's for this court to form its own views to whether a fair balance is struck by Agudas' policy for the reasons that we've set out. We'd invite your lordships and the ladyship to find that they have. Um, as I said, I, I was in my concluding sentences, my lord.
Thank you very much, Mr Wise. Well, we turn then to Mr Grodzinski, uh, on behalf of Agudas.
My lords, my ladies, can I start with a summary of our key submissions? The starting point to resolving the remaining issues in this appeal is the considerable area of what is now common ground under sections one, five, eight and one, nine, three of the twenty ten Act. First, that the OJC in Hackney suffers many compelling housing-related disadvantages and needs, including from poverty, overcrowding, the communal aspects of their religion and antisemitism. That's the first area of common ground. Second, that Agudas' arrangements for allocating housing enable those needs to be met and those disadvantages to be, quote, minimized, close quotes, within the meaning of section one, five, eight. And third, as to section one hundred and ninety-three, it is common ground that Agudas' arrangements have been implemented in pursuance of its charitable instrument and that they have been made for the purpose of compensating for the relevant disadvantages and that those disadvantages are linked to the OJC's protected characteristic of religion. Those are the three areas of common ground. Set against that common ground, our primary submission is that the divisional court was right for the reasons it gave to find that Agudas' housing allocation arrangements were proportionate and therefore lawful under section one hundred and fifty-eight and one hundred and ninety-three two A. The factors which the divisional court took into account were all relevant to the proportionality assessment. In particular, and in addition to addressing the needs and disadvantages which I have just referred to, the divisional court was right to take into account what has been described in some of the documents before you as market forces, namely, one, that Agudas' properties comprised only one percent of social housing in Hackney, the remaining ninety-nine percent being potentially available to everyone outside the OJC, including the appellant. Two, the huge imbalance between demand for those small number of properties from the Orthodox Jewish community, and as I say, the very limited numbers of Agudas' properties available to let each year, about twelve to thirteen. And three, the demands for social housing from the general population in Hackney and the imbalance between supply and demand in that wider context. Given all of those circumstances, the divisional court was entitled to find, indeed plainly entitled to find, that the policy was proportionate and that a different policy, which would enable the general population outside the OJC to apply for the very limited allocations of housing stock managed by Agudas, would indeed have fundamentally undermined Agudas' legitimate charitable objectives for the obvious reason that it would have seriously diluted the number of properties available to the OJC itself and would thereby have left members of the OJC in Hackney without Agudas accommodation, thereby facing all the relevant needs and disadvantages I've mentioned. That's our primary positive case. Can I then turn
Can I just raise with you, I wonder, is it also a relevant matter that the housing in question has been specially adapted to the needs of the Orthodox Jewish community?
My lord, we would say yes, although in fairness to the divisional court and my learned friend, the specific physical adaptations, such as kosher sinks, two sinks to enable meat and milk to be kept separate, and other physical adaptations, were matters which the divisional court placed some but limited weight upon. And I'm not seeking to say that the divisional court heard in law, because as my lord well knows, matters of weight are for the court of first instance.
Yeah. Thank you.
Can I then turn to summarise our response to each of the appellant's grounds, starting with ground three, under which Mr Wise asserts that a positive action measure can never operate as what he calls an automatic unconditional rule, must always include individual assessments of merit and can only ever operate as a tiebreaker between equally meritorious candidates. We have, sorry to say, seven points in reply. One, there is no relevant proportionality principle in EU or convention case law which says that a blanket, or as it's sometimes more benevolently referred to, bright line rule, is necessarily unlawful. As with other features of the proportionality principle, it always depends upon the context. Two, most of the positive action case law of the Court of Justice, on which my learned friend relied this morning, starting with the Marshall series of cases, which I will take you to. Most of those cases were concerned with a very different context of equal opportunity in the area specifically of recruitment and promotion. It's the recruitment and promotion context which is specific and cannot be read across, or in our submission even usefully inform the approach in the present case. And I'll be explaining why. Three, the distinct approach to positive action in the recruitment and promotion context is expressly recognised by the separate provision made in the twenty-ten Act by section one hundred and fifty-nine, which includes limitations on positive action in the area of recruitment and promotion. And those limitations are not present in the general positive action provisions which are at issue here, namely, section one hundred and fifty-eight. So the distinction I have just mentioned in my point two is built into the structure of the twenty-ten Act itself. That's my third point. My fourth point is that unlike most of the Court of Justice decisions on which Mr Wise relies, the two Court of Justice decisions in Badec and Lomas are more relevant because they in part at least concern proportionality in the allocation of limited resources. And as I'll show you tomorrow, when we look at the substance of the judgments, they are entirely inconsistent with Mr Wise's arguments that such measures can never operate as a bright line rule, can never operate unless they do so as a tiebreaker and must always include individual assessments of merit. There are passages we haven't yet looked at in those two cases that are entirely inconsistent with Mr Wise's case. Five, the approach to proportionality in the present context is relevantly informed by our domestic case law concerning challenges to local authority housing allocation policies, in particular, the decision of this court, or rather, its predecessor, the House of Lords, I beg your pardon, in Ahmed, applied by Mr Justice Garmen in a discrimination context in the case of XC and SAB. And those cases recognise the general undesirability of the courts interfering with complex, polycentric housing allocation policies, which make particular provision for certain groups. Six, the appellant's case under ground three finds no support in the statutory guidance on positive action contained in the EHRC code, which the courts have a statutory obligation to take into account. See Equalities Act two thousand and six, section fifteen, subsection four B, EF three four six seven. And seven, and importantly, we do not accept that Agudas' arrangements can be characterised as an automatic and unconditional rule in any event for all the reasons given by the divisional court at paragraph seventy-three. Those are our summary of our seven points in reply on ground three. As for ground four, this consists largely in seeking to re-argue various points of detail which failed in the divisional court and failed again in the Court of Appeal. And I'll deal with the detail tomorrow. I just want to address two points of principle now. First, in seeking to counter what is clearly the minuscule impact of the disadvantage caused to the excluded majority, because as I mentioned before, ninety-nine percent of the housing stock remains potentially available. So in seeking to counter that hurdle, Mr Wise's arguments expressly but mistakenly focus on the impact of the policy on his client's particular circumstances, rather than on the question correctly identified by the Court of Appeal, which considered the position from the perspective of the relevant groups, i.e. the included group and the excluded group. And as I'll show you, the relevant case law on proportionality, both domestic and European, as well as the EHRC code, all make clear that it's the comparative position of groups that is the relevant question. That's the first point of principle on the ground four. The second is that in assessing the nature of the discrimination in this case, it is always relevant to keep in mind that the excluded class comprises the vast majority of the population who are not members of the OJC. The law does not treat all forms of discrimination in the same way. There is, in our submission, a world of difference between discrimination which shuts out a protected minority from a form of benefit or participation in society based upon their religion or particular race, where weighty reasons are generally required, and the position in this case where a charity provides benefits to a protected minority, thus necessarily excluding the undifferentiated majority, even if that majority can define itself as having some protective characteristic, simply in the negative sense of not belonging to a minority religious group. And we'll see that point made particularly clearly when we turn underground, well, the ground that deals with article eight, when we, sorry, I beg your pardon, the Race Directive, where the decision of the Court of Justice in the Jaisska finance case makes just the point I have made. We'll have to have a look at that tomorrow. That's all I wanted to say about our response in summary to grounds three and four. Can I then address the question under section one hundred and ninety-three two B, which arises on the grounds one and two of the appeal, where we submit that the Court of Appeal was right to find that it was not necessary to read in to section one hundred and ninety-three two B any additional proportionality test? That is because, even if the Race Directive or Article fourteen were engaged in this case, which they're not, the requirements of section one hundred and ninety-three two B are compatible with the positive action provisions of the Race Directive and with the requirements of Article fourteen. And I'll summarise in a moment why that is so. But as a preliminary observation, it would be surprising if Parliament had enacted an important provision of the Landmark Equality Act twenty-ten without being satisfied that its provisions were indeed compatible with EU directives on equal treatment.
Could I ask you a question? Why did Parliament choose to restrict section one nine three, subsection two, to charitable housing associations and not non-charitable housing associations? What's the difference?
Can I answer, my lady, in this way? In analysing the compatibility of section one hundred and ninety-three two B, one must keep in mind, as the Court of Appeal did, that the public benefit test, which must be satisfied for an organisation to be a registered charity under the Charities Act two thousand and eleven and its predecessor legislation, involves a balancing exercise between public benefit and detriment. My lady will recall that section one hundred and ninety-three is not just about charitable and non-charitable housing associations. One hundred and ninety-three is about charities, full stop, of any description.
Yes, but I see that the Court of Appeal and Divisional Court thought that the expression, quote, "in pursuance of a charitable instrument", would apply in this case where the objects do not actually sharply bring out the intention to exclude persons who are not members of the OJC, so that there's very little regulation that one could expect from the Charities Commission.
Well, my lady, I'll come back to that question if I may, but it's common ground in this, on the fact of this case, that, at least now it is, it was in dispute below, but it's now common ground that Agudas has acted in pursuance of its own charitable instrument. And no one has suggested that its charitable instrument somehow is unlawful under the requirements of the charities legislation, or that it does not meet the public benefit test.
No, but it might be said that in order for this particular privilege to be conferred on a charity, it should be clear from the instrument, which, the charitable objects clause or whatever it is, that there will be an exclusion of persons other than the preferred group or that there will be a near exclusion, whereas in this case, it's a fairly general objects clause.
Well, the objects clause says there will be primary benefit to members of the OJC. And the way that operates in practice, as has been explained by the divisional court's judgment, such that in the highly unlikely event that market forces changed, so that there was a surplus of housing, so that all members of the OJC were accommodated who applied and who could meet the requirements of charitable need, because you can't just come along irrespective of means and ask to be accommodated by Agudas. It's not a needs-blind charity, on the contrary. It's highly need-sensitive for the reasons I'll take you to tomorrow. But if all needy Orthodox Jews in Stamford Hill, Hackney more widely, had been accommodated by the charity and there was surplus property, the undisputed evidence of Agudas in the form of the witness statement that Mr Simons recorded in the divisional court's judgment was that in those circumstances, people from outside the OJC would indeed be allocated properties. I hope that answers my lady's question.
Yes, it does. It is a striking difference, though, between this case, which, the objects clause of which would lead a reader to think that the housing association was going to do that, which, as I understand it, the Bangler Housing Association does, and an objects clause which limits the benefit to a particular named group. I think the Catholic Adoption Services, as an example. No one's yet gone back to that case and so on.
There'll be a limit to how much I can deal with the detail of each of the other potential charitable objects clauses. We don't have the objects clause of the Bangler Association in front of us. And one other point I'll be making tomorrow is that the court can derive little assistance from the existence of other housing associations, but we know nothing about their objects clause, not well. We know, there's one object clause we do have, but we don't know what needs and disadvantages they meet in particular. There's no evidence on that. All that was ad used in evidence below, which we can look at in due course, is the mere fact that there are other housing associations that aren't, whose policies are not framed in the same way as Agudas' is. But that doesn't tell you anything informative in my respectful submission. Can I just return to the question of the compatibility of section one hundred and ninety-three two B? I mentioned that in order for section one hundred and ninety-three two B to be satisfied, the benefit has to be provided in pursuance of a charitable instrument. That in turn brings in the public benefit test in the Charities Act two thousand and eleven. And that involves itself a balancing itself a balancing exercise between public benefit and detriment. That is so as a matter of common law relating to charities, and that common law test has been incorporated, as I'll show you tomorrow, in the Charities Act 2011 by sections one to four of that act, and that has in turn been incorporated into the Equality Act by section 194 subsection three. And what follows from all of that is that in our submission, Parliament has, in enacting section 193-2b, struck the proportionality balance itself in a closely circumscribed class of case. Parliament has determined that once the provisions of benefits are in pursuance of a charitable instrument, and are two people who share a protected characteristic, and are for the purposes of preventing or compensating for a disadvantage linked to that characteristic, the provision of such benefits will be justified and proportionate, unless one of the specific exceptions contained in section 193 or 194 apply, none of those being said to apply in this case. Mr Wise argued below that section 193 was ousted in this case because this was colour-based indirect discrimination, but that argument was comprehensively rejected by the Divisional Court and has not been renewed. Such a scheme, my lords and my ladies, has the significant advantage of meaning that charities who provide benefits in accordance with a closely circumscribed scheme in section 193-2b do not then need to demonstrate in every case that they are acting in accordance with a legitimate aim and proportionately, because by definition, Parliament has determined that question already. And in our submission, such an approach was well within the margin of appreciation afforded to Parliament, and what I have just said is supported by the legislative history of section 193-2b and by the EHRC code. My lords, my ladies, I see it's four o'clock, I would have about 10 more minutes, but I'm happy to pick it up in the morning at whatever time you like me to.
Thank you very much, Mr Rozinski. We've had quite a lot of information to absorb today, so I think we'll adjourn now and sit again at 10:30 tomorrow morning. Thank you all very much. Call for an hour adjournment.